Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our regular town council meeting. Tonight is Monday, June 5, 2023. It's about five minutes after seven. I will ask Councilman Cotton Zaro to please stand and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we do not have any presentations tonight, but we do have a public hearing. And prior to hearing from the public, I will ask our town clerk to please read the notice for me.
Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold public hearing at 7:00 PM on late June 5, 2023, in the council chambers of the municipal center, Central Square in Plainville, to hear public comments regarding the use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with American Rescue Plan Act for the restoration of exterior B3 at Plainville High School. Estimated cost $170,000, of which $150,000 will be ARPA funds dated at Plainville, Connecticut this first day of June 2023.
Thank you for that. Before we begin taking comment from the public, I'll just ask our town manager. This is fairly detailed with the notice, but just a little bit of background about this has been earmarked for a while in our ARPA funds and how we're getting to this point now.
Right, sure. Yeah, this is a project for the high school. It's a masonry project that has detailed, total cost is over $170,000 approximately, with $150,000 coming from ARPA and then $20,000 coming from our capital fund. And basically, it'll be brickwork repointing, you know, sealing up brick on the oldest section, what they call, refer to as the 54th section on the backside of the high school. So this will take care of those problems and help with the water infiltration, trying to prevent that, you know, anything that we can shore up so it doesn't lead to larger problems within the building or so.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. At this time, I will open the public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak to the public hearing, please come to the podium, turn on the mic, and state your name and address. Does anybody wish to speak to the public hearing tonight?
John Kislick, 65 Forestville Avenue. Well, I was on the Capital Projects Building Committee when we renovated the high school. And that, we wanted to do that then, but I think with the architect coming up with other things and then the problem with the pool and the oil tank and all kinds of other things, we didn't have the money. But it was discussed, we wanted to do it. But I have some questions and comments about it. Who made the specs for this project? And is the Capitol Projects Building Committee involved at all? I know we still have a few members on the committee, so I want to know who spec'd this out and who's going to oversee the project? Does anybody know?
Yeah, I don't, I, you know, I'm, John, I don't know if the Capital Projects Building Committee got involved in this. It has been, I can honestly tell you, it has been on our capital program for a number of years. And of course, you know, it got put off and put off for other, for other concerns and other things that happened. So it has been on the list for quite a while. I will ask the town manager if they actually have been involved or if this is just some information we got.
Yes.
When there was a.
Yeah, it was, they engaged, the school engaged Millennium Construction Group to do that spec. And, you know, I had not thought about, I think of this as repair. I'm not sure, I guess, new to the, to the, to the community and to the process, but maybe this is a, as, maybe there's a price tag, maybe there's a certain threshold that you cross that it gets referred to the building committee or not. But I saw it as a repair job, not a new construction, new project for them. But if the council feels that they, you know, that has merit, that it should be referred to them, it could be, but the school system has gone outside to get that spec done by Millennium.
Okay.
Because the problem I have, the majority of this is going to be labor. It's labor intensive. And there should be specs for how much of the grout you take out, the mortar between the bricks, you know, the right material, then if they're going to wash it down with an acid wash later, then if they're going to seal it. And we should have somebody to oversee this. But what happened when I was on Capital Projects with some, I'm not saying anything against this contractor, but what has happened? We had some bad things happen on that project. And I would like to have somebody oversee this, to make sure they're taking out the grout to the depth that it's supposed to be, they're not just capping something over, make sure it's the right mortar and everything like that. This is important. $170,000 is a lot of money, and I'd like to see the town make sure it's done right, have somebody oversee that who has some expertise in it. I think it's something we should do. It's, it's really important. We don't want to have it, mortar falling out in five years and then porous again or something like that. So that's, that's my only, only concern with the project. I'm not against this being done. I said we probably would have done it before, but I think it's something that's really important, to oversee the project.
Well, those are good points. And as I said, it's been on the capital program for many, many years. And I would expect the facilities director would be certainly the person that would coordinate and oversee that.
Yeah.
You need additional information, we can certainly get it for you, but that's, I'm sure that's how they will proceed.
As long as somebody stays on top of that.
Sure.
Because, you know, they constantly trying to cut corners. And like I said, this is mainly, is my opinion, it's mainly labor. Materials, I don't think are going to be much. And you want to make sure they do the labor right. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council regarding the public hearing?
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbank Street. Happy birthday. I guess what's confusing me, is this a dress up, or did I miss, is this a dress up for the high school or is this a repair for the high school?
If I may, I see it as a repair, the brick and mortar repair.
Okay. Well, what I find interesting.
Or just a, just a section of the backside. I think it's also identified as the Keagle Gymnasium, the 100, 200 section of the building.
So this is repaired, not just dressing things up?
Right.
And the only, I was kind of curious how that answer was going to come out, because we've been debating the middle school. And all of a sudden, and I'm just speaking from my own personal, when I read this, when I got this in the internet, we've been fighting back and forth, not fighting, but discussing middle school. No one ever mentioned the high school. And I was stunned to see this pop up. I said, where's this coming from now? It's like flowers growing, it just seems to be no control of what's going on, in my world. There's no control. All of a sudden, some, we need it for this, oh, we need something for that. Right? And this thing is totally out of nowhere, at least in my world.
Yeah, it, I'll just say that this, again, this has been on the capital projects for probably the past four or five years. It has been, it has been mentioned, it has been put into the capital. And as a result, other items were more urgently needed, so that has been postponed. And, you know, the council has been told, you know, well, it could go another year, it could go another year. And, and so it was, it was. But it has been spoken about for the past several years, Lou.
In the.
We just haven't gotten it. And now that we have these ARPA funds that we got, it's, it's probably a very good use of those funds to make that repair now and take care of a problem that's been there for a while.
Okay. But when you say they were discussed, they weren't discussed at town council meetings, they were within the framework?
Well, it was during our cap, when we did our budget review, we also look at our capital requests, and it has been in there and discussed during our previous budget reviews.
Okay. Again, I'm going back and I don't want to be redundant, but I just find this strange. We're going back and forth on this middle school and all of a sudden, this, they just, these things just start popping up.
Yeah.
And I said, you know, where's, that's enough. You know, and also looking onto that with the school and also compounding it in my world. You know, we've done the Lyndon Street School, we've done the high school prior with the football fields and all that. We've done the Wheeler School, all right? Now we're discussing the middle school, all right? The next thing I'm looking to see now what's going to happen is Tofflon. And nobody's mentioned Tofflon School. Is that on the agenda somewhere?
Well, Tofflon was done at around the same time as the high school. They were done at the same time.
But is that being addressed in any way, shape, or form? My point, I guess what I'm driving to, Madam Chair, is, and if I'm going off cut, I mentioned at the prior meeting, all right? Maybe there should be a group put together, a selective group, building people or whatever, and take a look at our school systems, the buildings. I'm not just internal and subtract business, the buildings themselves, because these things are popping up like weeds. All right? And we have enough of debate going on with the middle school, which there's still no answers.
Right.
Or how we're going to go with that, if that makes sense. But again, this thing just totally caught me, I have to be honest with you.
Okay.
All right? I just had the biggest smirk on my face when I read this. I says, you've got to be kidding me.
Yeah. Well, I think it's a 1950s section, if I recall, which is one of the older sections of the high school. And that's what all of this masonry work is actually being done on, the 1950s section.
Oh, I don't challenge the age, and if it has to be done, it has to be done. I just find it unusual, and I'm beating this to death now. But what I find unusual, we're going into a build as new in the middle school. In the meantime, the education system and even our town council is sitting there saying, we've got a problem with the high school from years gone by. So why are we talking about rent of buildings new in the middle school? And we have totally ignored the high school till this all of a sudden surfaces. And that's what I don't understand. How is this agenda set up? I guess that's what I'm looking at. I, you can't answer that.
Well, I can answer to what we've, what's happened in the past five years, that this has been coming to the council and we've been deferring it in, in light of doing other projects. And now that we have these dollars from ARPA, which we can use for these one-time capital expenditures, it makes sense to take care of that now, rather than to put it in our annual budget, which will impact a lot of different things. These are dollars the federal government sent to every state, every city in town has dollars, and we can use it in the town. Plainville, the town side, has been using these dollars for capital improvement projects. And it's, and in my opinion, this is the best way to take care of a problem that's been out there for a while. We can use these dollars, take care of it, and it'll be set for some time.
Okay. And I want to conclude with, because I mentioned this at the prior meeting. We're talking, and specifically, we're talking about the middle school, how that's going to be looked at. Shouldn't there be a group, can't you put a group together, a select group, architects or whatever it takes, all right, to go to our schools and finalize just what condition they're in?
Mm-hmm.
Because it seems kind of bizarre. Every time you turn around, this is broken, that's, like, one teacher comes up and says the door doesn't work or the room smells and all this. Can't we put a team together and get all this resolved and put into one package and present it, this is what's wrong with our school systems and say, instead of going to a, oh, today I think we'll talk of middle school, tomorrow we'll talk Wheeler School, can't we put an educated, specific group to examine this? Is that possible?
We are currently working on having a review of the schools. We are going to hire a consultant who will look at the schools and advise us in terms of all of the schools and what we should be able to use as a planning tool to get us through the next several years.
Excellent.
And of course, the middle school will be looked at because that's the, the school that, right now, is looking to be upgraded and improved. So, but, but you can't, if you just do one school and ignore the rest of them, it's not a good use of that study. So we are having, we are going to be having that done.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing? Anybody else?
Gail Black, Foresty NC Avenue. This is a stupid question, but the clerk was, she has such a quiet voice. So I wasn't understanding. Are we talking about the money that comes from the COVIDs? Oh, okay, that, because I heard COVID, since I've been wearing my mask, my hearing isn't as good. So, really, it isn't. If anyone sees a tuxedo cat in my neck of the woods, please let me know. We're trying to find out if it belongs to somebody. It's actually a girl from Seattle who's looking for a house in Connecticut started this, so. And she's been putting notes on the town website, I think. So if anybody finds one, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so on the public hearing? Anybody else? Okay, thank you for your comments. I will close the public hearing and moving on to our next item. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of our previous meeting, please?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to accept the minutes of the May 15, 2023 regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any changes or updates to the minutes? Hearing, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Announcements and reports? Do we have any announcements or reports tonight?
Madam Chair.
Rosemary.
The only meeting I've attended since our last council meeting was the Housing Authority, a May meeting, and it was fairly routine meeting, going over a lot of maintenance work that they are doing. And just the only other thing I would like to say is, I've been hearing great feedback about the Memorial Day Parade, you know? People really seem to enjoy it this year. They thought the music was great, they thought it was well organized, and I think it was very well attended. And I think the organizers, including the person to my right, Councilman David Underwood, deserve a lot of credit. And of course, Dave Dudek, who worked with him as well.
And also Dan Hurley.
That's right, Dan, too.
And I got to tell you, I talked to Dave Dudek a little while ago, and I said, Dave, good job. He says, well, I've been working on it for six months. He said, he started to work on the next years this week.
Yeah, okay. But it was great, yeah.
And the crowds, I could not believe the crowds.
It was really good, yeah.
Great, thank you, Rosemary. Does anybody else have anything to report on? I just have a couple of items. Next Monday, the Board of Education will host the graduating class of 2023. They will be graduating with luck and weather permitting on the football field, which is always nice to have outside ceremonies. If not, I believe that then they moved inside to the gymnasium. But I'm sure all the graduates are looking forward to this big event and their families that support them throughout their school career. I wish them all the very best of luck in their future endeavors. I'm sure they will meet with great success. One other item I have, the Committee on Aging is going to be meeting this week, so I will probably have a report next time we meet about what we spoke about. There are no other reports tonight. We will move on to appointments and resignations. We have, I believe, one appointment tonight, so may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Rocco.
Motion to appoint Mark Romanov as a regular member of the Economic Development Agency for the term ending November 9, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good. Are there any other appointments or reappointments tonight that are not on the agenda that we could take care of? Okay, thank you. The Board of Education will not be here. They are meeting tonight because the next Monday's graduations, so that won't be happening. Report of the town attorney, Attorney Mastriani, hello?
Good evening.
Do you have anything for us?
Do you not have a report tonight?
Okay, thank you for attending. All right, report of the town manager, Michael?
Yes, good evening, thank you.
Good evening.
Five items on the agenda with finishing up with our six item happenings as well. I'll turn that over to Andy when I get through the five there. We have the first item listed as Revenue Collector Suspense List. The Revenue Collector has submitted a proposed suspense list to the town council totaling This list is prepared in accordance with the Connecticut State Statute, Section 12-165, listing those taxes that the Revenue Collector believes to be uncollectible. Motor vehicle totals $58,795.20. Personal property totals $66,949.50. Real estate totals $41,957.94. And deceased persons who previously owned motor vehicles and/or personal property totals The suspense list may still be collected and will be turned over to either a collection agency, the town attorney, or town constables. The deceased file will not be turned over. Collections from last year's suspense list totaled approximately $52,000, and there is an item under New Business regarding the suspense list. Item number two is a high school masonry restoration project, obviously tied to our public hearing tonight, in which we are using a combination of ARPA funds of $150,000 and capital funding of $20,000. The Board of Education is proposing to restore the exterior masonry on the 54th section of the Plainville High School. The oldest section of the school will have certain sections repointed. There has been some mortar deterioration over the years that must be addressed in order to maintain the integrity of the building, but also to prevent water infiltration behind the bricks, which could lead to larger problems inside the building. This would include sections around the old Keagle Gymnasium and the 100, 200 sections of the building. The project would include materials, cleaning, repair, waterproofing, painting, staining, and inspection. The scope of the work is estimated to be approximately $170,000 and will be utilizing the easy IQC contracting program through the Capital Region Purchasing Council. And there is an item under New Business to award that bid tonight. Item number three, the Charter Revision Commission Recommendations Final Draft Report. The Charter Revision Commission has submitted the final draft report for your review. Items in bold, red font are proposed changes made by the Charter Revision Commission. Additions are underlined, deletions have strike-throughs. Proposed changes to the charter include the following: changes that allow for waiver of the town manager residency requirement; language changes to clarify allowing the assistant town manager to act on behalf of the town manager; language to clarify participation in regional health districts; language changes to clarify all-day budget vote; and language changes to clarify gender references. There is an item under New Business to establish a public hearing. And there is also a flow chart that indicates two options, and one is in green, one is in yellow, and I'm recommending what I call Option 1 in the green option, just because I think, looking at the summer schedule, it gets a little bit difficult the further we get into, into the summer. But that is my recommendation and something that the council should take a look at as part of their process to set the public hearing date. And those two options, I hope you all have a copy of that in there. And so that's what we have under New Business. Item number four is the Fourth Quarter Transfers and Additional Appropriation. There are two items under New Business that would schedule public hearings at the June 19 Town Council Meeting on the recommended fourth quarter transfers and additional appropriation for fiscal year 2023. Details on the transfer and additional appropriations will be available hopefully later this week that I will transmit and get out to, to the council. So tonight would be just setting those public hearings under New Business. And of course, the summer schedule. The town council has historically held one regular meeting during the months of July, August, and September. Staff is suggesting that regular meetings be held July 17, August 21, and September 18. And there's an item under New Business to do that with the suggested dates. And with that, I will turn it over to item six and turn it over to Andy, unless there are any, any questions, he will take care of the happening.
Okay, Andy? Then we'll take questions if anybody has anything for either of you.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Yep. So starting off, bulk pickup for Public Works. Spring bulk pickup is scheduled to end on Monday, June 26. Plainville has an on-demand policy for collection of bulk pickup, which is only available to current residents who have curbside trash and recycling collection, and you are eligible to receive one bulk pickup per year. This is free of charge, and it's acceptable for all large items that do not fit with a normal waste collection. So this is the spring collection, it'll end at the end of June, and then the fall collection will begin in October. For more information, you could visit the Town of Plainville website at www.plainvillect.com. Retire Worn American Flags. State Representative Francis Cooley and State Senator Henry Martin encourage residents to retire their worn American flags. Flags may be donated between now and June 13 at the Plainville Municipal Center and the Plainville Public Library. There are bins designated for the drop-offs that are clearly labeled at the entrances. Dog Licensing Reminder from the Town Clerk's Office. The Town Clerk's Office is reminding dog owners that all dogs over six months old must be licensed by June 30 for the 2023-2024 calendar year. Renewals may be done in person, by mail, or online if the rabies vaccine is current. If the rabies vaccine information is not current, owners must submit an updated rabies certificate for the license to be processed. The cost for dog licenses is $8 for neutered or spayed dogs and $19 for non-altered dogs. After June 30, a penalty charge will be imposed of $1 per month for each month that the dog is not licensed. For more information, you can call the Town Clerk's Office at 860-793-0221, extension 7153. The Juneteenth Celebration from Youth Services. The Plainville Anti-Racism Task Force will be hosting the first Juneteenth celebration on June 19, 2023. The celebration will take place at Memorial Park from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. You could learn more about the history behind Juneteenth and celebrate with residents and local officials. This is a free event and will feature music and performances. The Summer Concert Series from Recreation. The 2023 Plainville Recreation Summer Concert Series kicks off on Thursday, June 22, at 6:30 PM. There will be six concerts throughout the summer, all taking place at Norton Park. The event is free to attend, and for more information, you can follow the Town of Plainville on Facebook or on Instagram, or you can call the Recreation Department at 860-747-6022. From the Plainville Public Library, and for all of the information from the library, you can visit www.plainvillect.com livery, or you can call them at 860-793-1446. First is the Summer Library Adventures 2023 Summer Reading Program. This begins on Monday, June 19, and is open to all children and teens. The program includes crafts, cooking, science experiments, and more. You can visit the library to pick up a brochure, or visit plainvillect.com/livery for more information. Drop-In Graduation Cap Decorating. This is on Saturday, June 10, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. High school seniors are welcome to visit the library and use the supplies that are provided there to decorate their graduation caps and celebrate their big day. There's no registration needed, and you can stop by anytime during those time period. Volunteers from Tales of Joy. Friday, June 9, from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM, and on Wednesday, June 21, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Volunteers from Tales of Joy, a nonprofit organization, will visit with their companion dogs for some one-on-one social time. All ages are welcome, and individuals and families, and family groups may sign up for 15-minute visits. You can do so at the reference desk or by calling 860-793-1446, extension four. The final event from the library is Representation Matters. This is on Thursday, June 15, at 6:00 PM. Educator and LGBTQ+ advocate Claire McCarthy will discuss why cultural portrayals of transgender and non-binary folks matter. You can register through the online calendar at plainvillect.com/livery. And finally, from the Senior Center, and for all information on Senior Center programs, you can call the Plainville Senior Center at 860-747-5728. And all programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. The first is Grandparents Raising Grandchildren on Tuesday, June 6, 2023, at 10:30 AM. Share resources, ideas, and struggles, and joys, and more with others who are raising their grandchildren. Caregiving Connections on Tuesday, June 13, at 10:00 AM. Connect with other caregivers at the Senior Center to support one another on our journeys and recognize the challenges and frustrations of 24/7 caregiving. There's a trip meeting for a There's a trip meeting for a Viking Rivers cruise on Wednesday, June 14 at 2:30 p.m. This is a Germany-to-Hungary, April 27 to May 5, 2024. It includes a bunch of different locations throughout the region there. And those who are interested can go to the Senior Center to learn more about the trip. Snappy Senior Photography on Thursday, June 15 at 10 a.m. You could join this event where participants will share photos from their favorite events or activities. The AARP Smart Drivers Course on Thursday, June 15 from 12:30 p.m. to 4:30 p.m. This is $20 for AARP members and $25 for non-AARP members. The course teaches valuable lessons on defensive driving strategies and provides a refresher for rules of the road. If you attend, you may be qualified for a multi-year automobile insurance discount. The Memory Cafe at the Senior Center is on Thursday, June 15 at 2:00 p.m. The Memory Cafe is a warming and welcoming program for individuals with memory loss. And anyone experiencing memory loss is welcome to attend with their loved ones or caregivers. Finally, Help for Veterans on Tuesday, June 20 at 10 a.m. It is by appointment only. And you can call Jason Coppola, a Veteran Service Officer. The number is 203-805-6340. And you could find out your status. You can work with them for any needs or paperwork that is required. And you can have a face-to-face appointment at the Senior Center. And this is only available for residents of the 5th Congressional District. I lied, there's actually one more left. Hoop skirts and flappers from the Connecticut Historical Society. This is on Tuesday, June 20 at 2:00 p.m. at the Senior Center. The Society's Costume and Textiles Collection will be, portion of it will be brought to the Senior Center. And you could learn how women's clothing has transitioned from the iron rain of the hoop skirt to the relative freedom of the flapper dress. So that'll be on the 20th of June. So that is all I have.
Okay, thank you both for your reports. Does anybody have any questions or comments for either Michael or Andy regarding the report they gave us?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just one quick one for Andy. You had said that the concerts are starting on 6:22, but those concerts are always on Tuesday nights, correct?
Let me double-check quickly on what we have. And I'll clarify with you in a moment.
Okay.
Yep.
All Tuesdays, right.
If anyone else has any other questions, I'm gonna pull this one up now for clarification.
You all set?
Yep.
Did anybody else have anything? Well, Andy's double-checking. No? Okay, good job.
It says Thursdays. It says Thursdays on what Jacob has, so.
I pulled up the summer concert schedule.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So it says Thursdays, okay, thank you.
Yep, that's what I have, too.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you, Jacob.
Everybody all set?
All set.
Okay, thank you both. Thank you both. All right. The next portion of our meeting is a public comment section. During this time, we welcome the public to come to the podium. Please state your name and address, and you'll be given three minutes to speak to the council. Does anybody wish to speak to the council?
John Kuslik, 65 Forestwood Avenue. Big crowd tonight. I guess it was meant to be that the BOE has their meeting again on your council meeting night, because I had so.
Well, because of graduations next.
Well, they could have done any other day.
Next week, which is when their normal meeting is.
They could have done any other day.
Okay, well.
I think they didn't want me there because I had ideas for them to save money and had curriculum improvements for grammar school. So I don't think they want to hear me. The other thing I talked about, I was on a school closing committee for Trash School once. And when I got on, I don't remember how or what. I remember meeting at the high school. And I thought we were there to discover if we had to close the school. And I was never in favor. So I think they regrouped, and they told me they didn't need me. So I never was on there for the end. I have to talk fast because we got limited time. Now, the parade, I agree. Meryl and I attended, it was great. And that middle school band, I thought it was half the population of the students in that school. It was huge, and it was an excellent parade. We really enjoyed it. Now, my main reason here tonight is Pottery Ski Park and Pond. And I hope, I know not all of you got this. I believe this is an ordinance, Chapter 285, that spells out everything for hours' operation, the boating, swimming, fishing. So I'm hoping that this council stays with this and doesn't give that Lisa Lozier her wish to take away boating. I mean, boating is spelled out, that there's 15 boats allowed on Pottery Ski, 25 on Hamlin's Pond. And this, this person is actually, in my opinion, violating part of this chapter by trying to encourage doing away with some of these things. And I hope, I don't know where this council stands, but I hope you're not gonna make any changes and you leave it alone. And, and also, I still feel that this person, who is against recreation for our, our town parks and ponds and whatever, is really in, going opposite of conservation. This is all part of conservation. And I feel this person is detrimental to our Conservation Commission. And I'm gonna ask you again to consider removing her from that Conservation Commission. We do not need people in this town who are detrimental to recreation and our, our facilities. And that's how I feel that she is. If you need somebody to fill in the rest of her term, I'll gladly do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Anybody else? No? Okay, well, if there are no others, I will close the public comment section. Moving on to our new business. We do not have any old business to take care of, so we will move on to our new business. May I have a motion for item number one, please?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to authorize the use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the American Rescue Plan Act for the high school masonry restoration project in the amount of $150,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item number two.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to approve the Revenue Collector Suspense List.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item number three.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to award bid number 2023-23 High School Masonry Restoration under Capital Region Purchasing Council Work Order number 113943 to Millennium Builders Incorporated, Rocky Hill, Connecticut in the amount of $170,137.37.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item number four, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to establish a public hearing on Monday, June 19, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. in the Municipal Center to hear public comment regarding Charter Revision Commission's final draft report.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to establish a public hearing on Monday, June 19, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. in the Municipal Center to hear public comment regarding an ordinance entitled Ordinance Establishing Fourth Quarter Transfer Transfers for Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item number six, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to establish a public hearing on Monday, June 19, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. in the Municipal Center to hear public comment regarding an additional appropriation for the fiscal year's 2023 budget.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?